Good morning. This meeting of the Baltimore City Council Health, Environment and Technology Committee is now called to order. I am Councilwoman Danielle McCray, representing the 2nd District, also Chair of the Committee. In attendance, we have Councilman Mark Conway, Councilman Ryan Dorsey, Councilwoman Felicia Porter, Councilman, and bear with me, James Torrance, and Councilman Isaac Yitzhak Schleifer. We also have Councilman Christopher Burnett, who is the sponsor of the bill that we will be hearing today. From the Mayor's Office, we have Nina Themelis, and from the Council President's Office, we have Nikki Thompson. Also in attendance, we have Matt Peters, who is staff to the committee. Before we get started, just a couple of ground rules. Please stay muted until you are recognized by the Chair. Mute yourself when you are not speaking. Before you speak, please identify yourself, the agency or the organization you are with, and your position. Please speak slowly and clearly, and after you are finished speaking, please mute yourself again until you are recognized by the Chair. We ask that committee members and city agency officials keep their video on for the duration of the hearing unless there are technical difficulties preventing you from doing so. This is for transparency, so members of the public know that we are listening and paying attention. Last, for members of the public, there will be an opportunity for public testimony. You will have two minutes each for testimony. Today, we are here for City Council Resolution 21-0016R, Investigative Hearing, Building Backups of Untreated Sewage, for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Department of Public Works, the Law Department, the Health Department, and the Mayor's Office of Emergency Management to appear before the City Council to discuss the effectiveness and sufficiency of measures being taken to address basement backups of raw sewage in the city. The hearing format for today is as follows. We will have brief remarks from the sponsor of the resolution. Then we will have a brief presentation from DPW. We're going to hear reports from the other agencies, and we're going to give committee members the opportunity to ask questions. After that, we're going to hear from a stakeholder panel, and committee members will have the chance to ask the panelists questions. Then we're going to move on to public testimony. At this time, we're going to hear from the resolution's sponsor, Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee, staff, and those who are joining us today from the public for joining us today on this very important issue, wastewater backups. This was, hold on in my head, are you able to hear me? Madam Chair, we're good, okay, I was making sure. So, yeah, this is an issue that we have been looking into for, since the last term, as it relates to the agency, the Department of Public Works and other agencies handling of wastewater backups into people's basements. We had a series of hearings last year on the expedited reimbursement process and program, and I want to thank the agency for taking steps to better market that program and include more people in the process. I do want to also acknowledge, and I guess, I don't want to jump the gun, Madam Chair, but I know, because I know the agency is going to talk a little bit about it, but there was an announcement made just yesterday regarding the SOS program. One of the issues that I know my constituents have struggled with, especially with flooding along a few of my corridors, is the issue of being able to afford cleanup after a wastewater backup occurs. And that was one of the issues that we spoke about in the last round of hearings on this, was trying to provide direct assistance. So I do, I don't want to take the agency's thunder, because I know they're going to talk about this new program, but I do want to thank, thank them for taking that bold step to launching a pilot program to address this very important element of this issue, which is the cleaning up of wastewater from someone's property and providing that direct support, direct assistance from the city to do that. So, Madam Chair, I won't take long. I know we have a lot of speakers, but I do want to thank everyone for joining us today. I do have some questions about where we are as it relates to progressing, to ensure that there are, we're reducing the number of backups that are occurring every year and what those strategies are going to be. And so I'll take a step back, but thank you all for joining us today.
Thank you, Councilmember Burnett. We're now going to hear from agency representatives, committee members. I just asked that you hold your questions until we have heard from all agencies. And actually, before we start, I do want to acknowledge Councilwoman Odette Ramos, who is, has joined the hearing. So first, we're going to start, you're very welcome. First, we're going to start with the Department of Public Works. I do see Marsha Collins, also see a few other people from the department, if you want to go ahead and start at this time.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. This is Marsha Collins. I'm representing the Department of Public Works here today. We do have a slide program, and we'll try to be very concise and move it forward so we don't take up too much of the committee's time. I did want to introduce Yosef Kabetti. He is our Acting Bureau Head of Water and Wastewater, and Yosef will be presenting the information on the slideshow. And I want to just say quickly, thank you to Matt Peters for projecting things on here. It works best with his computer, so we, we thank you, Matt, for that, and we'll ask your indulgence when we ask you to advance the slides. So I'd like to introduce Mr. Yosef Kabetti to the committee.
Good morning, Ms. Collins. Thank you very much, and Councilwoman McCray, thank you for having us. My name is Yosef Kabetti. I'm the Acting Bureau Head for the Bureau of Water and Wastewater. We do have a short presentation that I can run through real quickly. The purpose of the presentation is to just provide a quick background on building backups, highlight an existing program, the expedited reimbursement program that we have talked about in previous hearings, and then talk about the SOS program that Councilman Burnett just alluded to. So if you could move to the next slide, please. And the next slide, so the next slide is just what causes building backups in general. Just to, you know, for everybody's, you know, information, we do deal with close to 500 building backup requests in our system on a monthly basis. Generally, they're caused by pipe failures or blockages that are typically, that typically happen during dry weather. And in some cases, when it does rain, like it does today, water from above ground, as well as groundwater, can enter the system and overwhelm the capacity and lead to backup issues. Next slide, please. The next map is just, just to communicate that we do track these backups on a consistent basis. We do have specific areas that we focus on through our general operation and maintenance program for cleaning, inspection, so on and so forth. Next slide. I do want to highlight that, as most people know, we are under a consent decree, a sanitary sewer consent decree, and this program or this consent decree has achieved quite a bit over the past several years. It is a two-phased approach. Right now, we are in between Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the execution of this consent decree. Some key achievements, in calendar year 2020, we had about $173 million worth of sewer rehab projects that either achieved substantial completion or conditional acceptance. Of course, prominent among these projects is the Headworks project that many of you have heard about at the Backriver Wastewater Treatment Facility. This is a $430 million project that is now, that has achieved technical compliance and is expected to eliminate a sewer backup that stretches about 10 miles further upstream. In addition to that, you see a few other key achievements, and the expedited reimbursement program being one of them in that we have enhanced that program to raise the limit, reimbursement from 2,500 to 5,000. Next slide, please. So, speaking of that program, next slide. This is a, this is a program, the Expedited Reimbursement Program, that reimburses customers that experience sewage backups that are caused by wet weather conditions, as well as capacity conditions, meaning when it does rain, when there is a wet weather event, if the capacity of our main lines are overwhelmed, it does, in some cases, lead to those individual home backups, and in those cases, customers, residential customers, are eligible. Next slide, please. And since the last hearing, there have been several enhancements regarding communicating with the public about this program, as well as just building backups in general. There's a website, our website, where residents can subscribe with their email addresses and phone numbers whenever there is a rain forecast, or in a case like this, email notifications are sent out, alerting people to the potential opportunity for reimbursement should they experience a backup. So this has been a very successful and aggressive marketing campaign that we have been implementing over the past year. Next slide. And in addition to that, you know, various platforms, and in 2020, as you can see, we've reached about 2,500 residents through the various communication media. Next slide, please. And part of the, the communication is, is focused on the reality that there's a single owner of these assets. The city of Baltimore owns these assets, but there's a joint responsibility that we have in terms of individual customer habits, in terms of what they flush down the toilet that can potentially contribute to issues in our assets. And so we've been, if you go to the next slide, we've been communicating through various pamphlets and other guides to inform individuals, residents, customers about the do's and don'ts, so that we can jointly help maintain our system. Next slide, please. These are some stats regarding the reimbursement program from fiscal year 2020. As you can see, there, you can see the number of applicants and the denied and the approved for fiscal year 2020. And if you could go to the next slide. And recap, since this program was started as a pilot in fiscal 2018, these are the amounts that we have paid in fiscal 2018, 4,500, 10,275, and 19. Went down to 1,000, and then this current fiscal year, currently, we are 3,000, north of $3,000 that we have paid out in reimbursements. And next slide, please. So quickly, moving on to the SOS program that was, the press release yesterday went out about this program. Again, it's another pilot, it's a one-year pilot that we are starting or have started. The conditions for participation are the same as the expedited reimbursement. The main key difference here is that, as opposed to customers coming out of pocket to clean and disinfect, we have third-party vendors that are on call and available to go to a home and provide the cleaning, disinfection, and disposal services for qualifying sewage backups. Next slide, please. The process is fairly simple. Again, we really need individuals to call 311 to make sure that that information is logged, and our inspectors go on location, assess the potential cause, and if it is a qualifying cause, as I mentioned, wet weather and capacity-related, we basically deploy the contractor, and the contractor is assigned to that customer. The service is rendered, and then we check in with the customer to make sure that we have provided the adequate level of service. Next slide, please. This is what I've already mentioned as far as the eligibility of the program. Next slide, please. And as you can see, the cleaning is done by professionals, specifically dehumidify and dry the space, disinfect, deodorize, and if there are any elements, any furniture items in the room that have been contaminated with the concurrence or the approval of the resident, they can remove the materials. Next slide. So as far as the engagement efforts, we have the information brochure, as you noted in the slide earlier, FAQ page, that will be part of the inserts for water bills. The website has been updated, and again, encouraging residents to subscribe at the DPW website to receive notifications regarding this program, as well as the expedited reimbursement program. And next slide, please. And I will conclude with that. Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you, Mr. Kabetti, and thank you also just for sharing about the new SOS program. Committee members, again, we're just going to hold out questions until all of the agencies have provided their reports. We're going to move on to the Department of Health. I believe we have Ms. DePaul Nipper on the line from the Department of Health.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the committee. DePaul Nipper, on behalf of the Baltimore City Department of Health, I'm here to basically reiterate what's in our agency report already. So we did provide a favorable report in the interest of transparency. We have a very limited role with respect to sewage backups. So we will cite a property owner if there is a backup within their property. Usually, that is at the behest of the tenant that's currently residing within the property, just to get them some sort of relief. We have also worked with DPW on literature around the cleaning of the sewage backups after the fact. And in the interest of safety, we do want to reiterate that COVID-19, while it is certainly a threat out and about when you're cleaning your home, it is believed that chlorine, at least according to the World Health Organization, makes the COVID-19 virus inert. Of course, more research needs to be done there, and we absolutely urge folks to exercise the greatest amount of caution when they are cleaning up these backups. But that is not necessarily your greatest concern with these backups in terms of safety. So, but in any case, I think hiring a professional is perhaps the best course of action. With that said, again, we urged a favorable report on this resolution, and thank you again.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the Department of Housing and Community Development. Stephanie Murdock.
Hi, yes, thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the committee. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Baltimore City Department of Housing and Community Development. I'm joined here today by Jason Hessler, our Deputy Commissioner of Permits and Litigation. We do stand by our report in support of the resolution. While DHCD is not involved in the cleanup of sewage backups, we do remain dedicated to maintaining the health and safety of neighborhoods throughout the city of Baltimore by enforcing the Building, Fire, and Related Codes, also known as the BFRC. The BFRC requires maintenance of plumbing fixtures, which are required to be kept clean and free from any foreign object or material, and further requires that plumbing system defects be corrected. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this resolution. We acknowledge the financial burden, the costs of cleaning up and disinfecting places on property owners, and we support, and we support the efforts of the sponsor, as well as the administration, to assist property owners. We stand by for questions.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the Department of Finance, Ms. Mara James.
Thank you, Mara James, for the Department of Finance. We stand by our report. One thing to note is that based on the prior hearings in the prior term on this bill, the Department of Finance and DPW worked together to pull out this program as a separate activity for the fiscal 2022 budget, based on requests from council. So that's something that we will now be able to track and show in our budget book moving forward to help with transparency and accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to be moving on to 311, One Call in Dispatch Center, B-SIT. That's going to be Ms. Lisa Allen.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Lisa Allen, the Call Center Director for 311 under the Baltimore City Information and Technology Agency. 311 is available actually 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, 365 days to take these calls from customers, and we log them under Sewer Water and Basement. Since 2018, we've taken about 19,000 calls for that service request. The service request, of course, has been passed on to DPW to take care of it, and then they would, of course, determine if the customer is eligible for the program, and then go back into our system and tell us what the resolution is. But we do stand by our support, and we appreciate any help that, of course, the city can give the customer, because this is a call where they do call and they're pretty much in distress. So I'll stand by for questions.
Thank you, Director Allen. We're going to move on to the Mayor's Office of Emergency Management, James Wallace.
Good morning, ma'am. Thank you. Good morning, council members. I'm also joined today on the phone by one of my lead planners, Ms. Elise Major Whiteford. The Office of Emergency Management stands by its previous report. Our focus during events such as these is a supportive role. We assist with supporting lead city agencies, as well as managing any needed resources. We do that through our 24-hour on-call OEM 10 duty officer. That person would report to the scene and help coordinate any needs, both by city agencies as well as affected residents. I would also add that in response to the last hearing this weekend, we have an upcoming event with Councilwoman Ramos. It's a very proactive approach to getting into the Hill and Road, 35th Street Quarter, in response to multiple events out there, both flooding and sewage backup and damage. As Yosef showed you in a couple of his slides, we've included in our handouts all of those pamphlets that you just saw. They're all going to be handed out to residents. It is a, it's an engagement event. We're also incorporating students from Mervo High School to help assist them with satisfying some of the requirements for graduation. So that events this weekend, it's one of several proactive flooding and sewage backup events that OEM is planning. Otherwise, we do stand by our report, as I said, and I will remain for questions.
Thank you, Chief, for the information. We're going to be moving on to the Mayor's Office of Performance and Innovation. And Nina, I believe you're just going to provide some information.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The Mayor's Office of Performance and Innovation stands by their report. They defer to the Department of Public Works. They currently are not operating a stat related to the building backups.
Okay, thank you, Nina. We're going to now go to, do we have someone for the law, from the Law Department?
Yes, hello. This is Patrick Hancock in the Law Department and the Central Bureau of Investigation. We handle liability claims. So we receive reports or claims from citizens who had sewer backups, and we review those claims, look for instances where the city made a mistake. If the city is basically negligent, didn't respond quick enough, caused the backup. So we respond to the claimants. We also work with their insurance companies, who sometimes file claims against us. We did have, you know, over the last several years, over the last four years, we counted up 292 claims, and we paid approximately $240,000 in costs where the city was negligent. And we have 38 open currently. So what we do is we look for unforeseen issues. If it was not predictable or not foreseen, or the city did a good job coming out and correcting the problem when it occurred, then we may not pay the claim. But where the city makes a mistake or didn't respond appropriately, we do pay those claims. We'll review all the damage estimates, expenses, sometimes provided by contractors, or sometimes provided by insurance companies. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock. I'm going to open the floor to committee members for questions, and committee members, please signal or use the raise hand function if you have a question for an agency. We're going to limit ourselves to two questions, and we're going to go back around after everyone has had an option, just had a chance to ask their questions for the members. My first question is going to be, we spoke a lot about communication, about outreach to our communities, and actually, let me double back. First, I want to say thank you to DPW. Thank you just for providing additional information today, and also on the, on the, on the progress that you made with the SOS program. We are very happy and excited, as a committee, to learn about the progress that you guys have made. So I just want to first say thanks for sharing that information. Just doubling back, we have spoken a lot about communication in Councilwoman Ramos's hearing about inland flooding, and also within this hearing, and several hearings in the past. Can you tell me how has COVID impacted communications to our community? And what steps has DPW taken to overcome any of those obstacles in reaching our communities? Just to provide more information about the reimbursement program, about sewage backup as well.
Is anyone able to answer that?
This is Marsha Collins, again, Madam Chair. I'll just give a brief outline. Yes, COVID has made it difficult to do the typical outreach communications that our liaisons do through our communications and community offices. They are not going to large gatherings, obviously, but they have been going out and doing door-to-door work, being respectful about distancing in distributing information. And the communications team has been very good about doing virtual meetings and outreach efforts. They routinely connect with community leadership to push information out. That has been a very useful tool. Obviously, virtual meetings have limitations, but we feel that, that it does help keep those connections strong with the active community leadership. We obviously have the web-based information that we push out, and I think in the presentation that Yosef provided, it talks about the use of social media, the alerts and information people can get if they sign up at our website. So we're trying to cover the world of social media, outreach, virtual meetings, door-to-door canvassing, and distribution of materials. That's really the way we've had to function for a while now. And our liaisons are still active and doing what they can to make sure people have the information. I did just want to note that the materials that we showed in the, in the presentation are on the website, but we are also going to have multiple language translations, so that those materials can be useful in some of the communities where English is not a first language. So that's coming shortly. And I just wanted to personally thank the Office of Emergency Management and Mr. Wallace's team. They have been working very closely with us, and as in the example that he gave is in the Hill and Road area of Councilwoman Ramos's district. He's been working closely with our communications office, with our, our office of, I'm trying to remember now the name of it, Kim Grove's office, that works on flooding issues, and also with collaborating on some of the work with the students, so that they could be involved. A survey was developed, so it's going to be a very interesting process to learn more about what the community is dealing with there. And we just really appreciate the partnerships and people willing to step forward to help learn more about what's going on in specific communities, to offer up additional information. about what's going on in specific communities, to offer up additional information. And that is going to be an interesting project coming up very shortly. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. I have one additional question before we're going to open it up. And my question is around, back in the March, back in the March hearing, I want to say that was 2020. It was stated that backups are, majority of the backups are not for wet weather events. But the SOS program and the reimbursement program is only targeting wet weather events from the communications that I see. Can you speak to why we're only targeting wet weather events? And are we going to be making progress in the future to open up the program to sewage backups that are just not applying to wet weather events?
What I'd like to do is I would like Mr. Paul DeSantis with the Law Department to answer that question from the legal perspective. But as to the last part of your question, once we see how this pilot performs, we will look at how and if we can expand it beyond just the limited wet weather capacity-related conditions. Mr. DeSantis?
Sure, happy to assist here. From a legal perspective, I think there is a concern if we're doing cleanups without consideration of liability. So what we generally would do in these instances, go through the general liability claims process where Mr. Hancock and his folks can do an evaluation under a negligence standard to determine if the backup was the result of some negligent act by Baltimore City. If we're going in and conducting cleaning without, you know, sort of absent that legal necessity, then there's a question regarding funding and whether the use of enterprise funds are the appropriate mechanism to pay for that. And I think it probably would be inappropriate to use ratepayer funds to fund a cleaning program when there hasn't been a determination regarding liability.
Thank you. I look forward to seeing some form of progress outside of wet weather events after the 12-month pilot. So we're going to move on to the actual sponsor of the bill for any questions that Councilmember Burnett has. And then I'm going to be moving on to members of the committee, starting with Councilman Yitzhak Schleifer.
So I'm out, Madam Chair. Okay. Oh, yeah, thank you, thank you. All right. So, well, you actually just asked the first question I had on my list. So the first question I would have is as it relates to the application process. One of the things that we talked about in the last round of these hearings was having a single process for applying for reimbursement. Has the department given that further consideration? And just to fill folks in, as you've heard so far, we have a DPW expedited reimbursement program. We have a new SOS cleanup program. And the Law Department also has its own claims. One of the suggestions that I threw out in that last round of hearings was just having one intake form for all of these programs. So that residents, so one, as a more efficient way to communicate out the resources available to people. And two, so that they don't have to continue to apply for now three different processes. Has there been consideration for just having one form of intake that would then trigger an investigation from Law, DPW? And now it seems like the potential for a cleanup if it's an eligible wet water event?
I'll go ahead and answer this one, though, Joseph. So we have considered it. The issue becomes the different standards that are applied for DPW's program. It is really more of checking boxes and providing information regarding cleaning disinfection. Whereas for the Law Department, it is a much broader scope where you're looking at property damage, things like that. To create a combined application, it would require the designation of documents in which are applying to what. It would become sort of overly confusing. We don't want to make assumptions as to what documents are applied to which program. You know, so I think it's better to bifurcate and have the individuals clearly articulate in each of the different processes what supporting document applies there.
Madam Chair, can I ask just a quick follow-up on that? Or?
Yes, you may.
So the only thing I would say is that, you know, I've been a part of other application processes. And oftentimes, one of the ways that you can handle that is, actually, I do understand that, is giving people the option. So there's one intake form. And if they want to apply for these other programs, then, you know, if they click, I do want to apply for the Law Department reimbursement, then maybe it sends them to that second processes. I'm just thinking that for a communications perspective, it's a lot easier for people to be aware of one intake. And then that intake alerting them to all of the other possibilities, even if it means that they have to go to click on the button that takes them to the Law Department page. It's just so that they know that the program exists in the first place. And so that would be my suggestion there. My second question, Madam Chair, one of the, and I was trying to jot down those as quickly as I could, but it still seems that there are issues with the lack of applications for the expedited reimbursement program. Based on the stats, it looked like this year there was approximately $5,000 or so paid out and not very many applications. One, if you could remind us, I think it was in Yosef's presentation, how many we have for this year? And I guess any explanation as to why the numbers still appear to be pretty low relative to the number of backups?
So the count for FY 2020 is 22 applications. And as I mentioned in the presentation, Councilmember Burnett, we have since the last hearing made several improvements or enhancements to the communications piece of this whole program to alert individuals prior to a rain event, as an example, that, you know, there is a rain forecast. Should you have a backup, this is a program that you can potentially qualify for. And potentially, last year with the pandemic, there might have been a little bit of a challenge in really getting the message out. But it's really a full-court press from our perspective in terms of the Communications Department alerting customers, ratepayers to the program. So I don't know if, Paul, do you have any other thoughts on the numbers and why we're still low compared to?
Well, if, looking at the numbers, and I can also speak to the application point. So don't let me forget that, Councilmember Burnett, because I do want to add that in. From the numbers, I think the wettest year we've had on record was the second half of 2018, which is reflected in, you know, what we saw in fiscal year 2019 for the increase in applications, increase in payouts. So I do think to some extent, the rain events are reflective of the applicants that were received under the program. And as far as the applications go, we are trying to make sure that we are cross-pollinating properly and providing the information in the applications as to, and certainly in communications with applicants regarding the other programs. So there is information on the Law Department's website and application regarding the expedited reimbursement program and communications with applicants under the reimbursement program certainly educate those individuals as to the general liability claims process.
This is Marsha Collins. Councilmember Burnett, I just wanted to let you know that the SOS program is basically acting as an enhancement to the expedited reimbursement program. So the application and qualification under the existing expedited program would allow you to take advantage of the SOS program, what we call the SOS program, without an additional application. It was just, would just be a matter of the customer's choice, whether they wish to take advantage of the cleaning opportunity that we could offer so that they doesn't have to come out of their pocket and wait for a reimbursement. So not a separate application for that program.
Madam Chair, if I could just add one, is that okay, Councilmember Burnett? I just wanted to follow up on the communication. One of the elements of this SOS program that we're very excited about is we will have what we're calling a customer journey mapping exercise, which means at every touch point that our customers have with DPW from the time that they call in 311, the time that a staff member contacts them for cleaning and the contractor or the vendor comes on location, we are going to be checking in to find out what their experience has been. And then use that sort of as a baseline to see where improvements can be made as we progress along with this program. And as we do that customer journey map, what we might also come up with is, you know, maybe some blind spots in terms of our outreach to the community about the program. So we hope to get some good intelligence out of that initiative.
Got it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We're going to move on to Councilman Schleifer.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair. So my first question is to Yosef. I agree as far as what you're saying about the communications. And I've been saying that the communications has been lacking for a while. But I'm curious to know how you guys handle situations that are a result of BGE gas line work or other BGE work that causes these sewer backups in homes by negligence on their part?
Those situations happen, as you know, not just with sewer assets, but other assets. And in general, what we have is we have a process to account for the damage caused by any third party and then recoup the costs from that point on. So, you know, in the cases that some of these activities by a third party may cause a backup, that those types of situations might need to go through the general liability process with the legal department. But I'll let Sir Hancock or Paul chime in with that if they have any other thoughts.
This is Patrick Hancock. I can answer that. So throughout the claim process, if we receive information from the claimant or receive information through our reporting from DPW on what happened there, if we find that a contractor, any contractor for any type of claim is responsible for the damages, once we find that out, we tender the claim, we reach out to that contractor, we put them on notice, and we also notify the claimant. And we also notify the claimant where they can reach that contractor to file a liability claim. Because contractors, contractors or other third parties are responsible for the damages that they cause. So if they do business with the city of Baltimore, they obviously have already provided insurance certificates to the city. They're going to be responsible for their damages.
So just to clarify, are those people eligible to go through this reimbursement process? Or are they not eligible for that?
Okay, so I think I can answer that. So whenever we receive a claim here in this office, if it is a sewer backup program, I'm sorry, if it is a sewer backup, typically those claimants are calling our office because they just had a sewer backup in their house. A lot of times, they just got off the phone with 311 or they just spoke with somebody in Public Works. So, and I can tell you that in the last year, you know, I've been the only law, CBI staff person that's always in this office and always taking the calls because of COVID. So I'll explain to them. I mean, it's a difficult situation, but I will explain to them. There are two different programs they can apply for. And there's a liability application, I explain that to them. And I also explain to them, I don't want to answer a lot of questions about it, but I'll explain to them that Public Works has that separate application process for the expedited sewer backup program. So I give them the phone number, I tell them about the website so they can make sure to apply there. So regardless, in the early stages of a loss, a lot of times, we do not know yet what caused it, if a contractor was involved, if a third party like BGE was involved. We don't know that usually right away.
Councilman, to further expand on that, in a case where we have a third party that does damage and then leads to a backup, that would not qualify under this SOS program as it is specific to wet weather and capacity-related conditions.
Got you. Okay, so my second question, I guess this is for you, Paul. When you were talking about the claims that have been paid out, obviously, that number is significantly higher than the number of reimbursements and stuff that we have done, which I was also surprised like that Councilmember Burnett was, to see that that number was so low because we all hear about these issues. But does the Law Department, is part of that coverage cover work that is done by the homeowner at the direction of the city, which later found out that that wasn't necessary? And an example I'll give, which I have faced multiple times over this past few years, is the city comes out, says, there's nothing, there's no issue on our side. You got to go ahead and replace your main line from the house to the street. They go ahead and do that, and turns out that that wasn't actually the issue. The homeowner has just spent, you know, $5,000 to $10,000 and turns out the issue is something else. Is that something that the Law Department accepts responsibility for? I guess the bad information that was given to the homeowner by city representatives?
I would actually, I'm going to defer to Mr. Hancock on that. It is that would probably come in as a general liability claim. And the analysis would be a negligence analysis that CBI would perform.
Okay, so I could certainly help try to answer that. So if a claimant calls this office and they've had a sewer backup, and if they've been told by the city on the initial visit, maybe the day of, that the backup is on their side, it could, it could be. But it's all underground. Sometimes I know there are situations where the backup, they thought it was out under the road or under the alley in the main line, but it turned out to actually be in the claimant's lateral line. Sometimes the city may believe that. And then it turns out it actually was on the city's side, under an alley. Now, it would still depend on the situation, on the actual cause of the backup under the city's side if that was an unforeseen, let's say, sinkhole collapse. Nobody could have known it happened and the city did not have any warning, no mistake was made and could not have known that it was on the city's side at that time. The city may not be liable. Again, when claims come in, I will ask claimants, you know, do you have insurance? Just put them on notice. Let them know if you have insurance. Just put them on notice in case you do need to file a claim. So unfortunately, the facts of the actual incident sometimes don't come out for a while. And it could, it could be a couple of days. It could be even longer for the city and the claimant to actually figure out where this backup occurred and why.
Okay, and so when we have a case like that, I'm dealing with one right now, we forward that to you? Or is there a specific form we're supposed to have them fill out?
So we have one general liability claim form from CBI, the Claims Office, that can capture information on sewer backups all the way down to any other type of liability claim. So that's the one. That's the one on our website. That's the one that I mail out on a regular basis to new claimants if they want it that way or email it to them. So, you know, that's the one. We say, get this form into us as quickly as possible. Even if we don't know really what happened there yet, we'd like you to fill it out, send it in. We set up a claim and within a day, we have an adjuster assigned to it. So we try to get the claims set up and then we make sure to figure out what happened.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Schleifer, are you good? Okay, just making sure. So we're going to move on to Councilwoman Porter.
Hello, Madam Chair. Sorry, thank you.
Sorry, thank you so much. I was actually looking at the report from DPW. I had a quick question related to, I have three public housing facilities in, in my district. And the level of sewage backups that they've received just in the past six months, some from wet weather, some from dry weather. Can you speak to, can you speak to the interagency connection with HABC? Because it seems like a breakdown there for the expedited sewage program reimbursement for those that, that exist in public housing.
And I'm sorry, Councilwoman Porter, it looks like Mr. Hancock, can you mute yourself, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
No, not, not, not you. I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Hancock.
Uh, thank you for, thank you for the question, Councilwoman Porter. In, in, in general, when, when it comes to addressing these sewage backups, that it all starts with the three one one process. So we, we address the situations case by case. Now, if there is a backup that is impacting an entire development, there, there have been cases where we have been on location with the personnel from HABC to, to determine what the root cause might be, and in some cases it might be a, a, a main line issue that has, you know, recurring backups and then we'll, we'll deploy a team to clean and flush to make sure that that doesn't happen again. But it would be helpful if, if we can definitely take a look at the, the, the addresses or the locations you mentioned and, and, and see what, what actions have been implemented in the past and, and what to resolve them.
Thank you so much. And specifically 2700 Spelman Road. We also have some in the Brooklyn Homes Town, I mean, I'm sorry, the Brooklyn Homes area as well. And then also in Westport Home. So I'll be able to pull the exact locations from my staff. And we'll definitely forward it over to you. Thank you so much, sir. And this, the second question I had related to the after, like, you know, once, once the, once the reimbursement hits, do you all do any checks 18 months, two years down, down the line to check on like mold or anything related to, like, related to that sewage backup? Particularly like kind of looking at like under carpets or anything of that nature? Just to check and see that the environmental health is, is there after the sewage backup occurred? Sorry.
Sure, thank you. It, it, when it comes to the, I guess the, the long running impacts inside the house, we do not check on, on those conditions. We, our, our, our main focus is on the conditions outside the buried infrastructure that the city owns to make sure that the factors that led to that original backup are addressed through regular operation and maintenance and cleaning. But we do not have a program that would address interior issues.
Yeah, I would encourage that in the future. A lot of, a lot of the constituent concerns that my staff and I have been receiving is relate to the after effects of a sewage backup. So families are having to pay 10, you know, five to $10,000 to remediate their homes after the sewage backups. And normally, from, from what they've shared with me, they've, you know, initiate, I mean, engaged with this reimbursement program, but they've been denied some of the, some of those additional reimbursement programs that happen inside their home as well as, as a result of those sewage backups. So that may be an opportunity for just some further, kind of further check-ins with, with, with families after the sewage backup, not just 90 days or 90 days after, but we're talking about 18 months after. You, well, yeah, 12 months or 18 months after so that we can ensure that like mold is not growing in their home. We can ensure that they're not, that they're not just living in unhealthy conditions as it relates to that sewage backup. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I do want to acknowledge that Councilman Bullock has joined the hearing. Next, we're going to hear from Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm, I, I want to ask just a couple of questions clarifying, I think, what some of my colleagues were trying to speak to earlier. I think their understanding of, of this process is probably a little more advanced than my own, given I didn't attend the, the hearing last year. But if you guys could explain a little bit how excuse me, Patrick, you, you noted that we had 292 claims and we paid out over $200,000 over the last four years. But then we, we look at the, the DPW process and we only had 22 applications come in. How could that be?
Certainly. So two different programs and they, they have very different parameters. So for the Claims Office and sitting in the Law Department, we look at these claims in a similar way that we would, for example, for a, a trip on a sidewalk, something like that. Even though it happened on city property, even though it happened, you know, it's the city's infrastructure, we're looking for, looking at it from a liability standpoint. Did the city know about it? Could the city have taken corrective measures? You know, did the city get warnings about it through previous three one one records? Because we sift through all of those on every claim. And, and if we see that there wasn't any notice, there wasn't anything wrong, or the city fixed it once they found out about it, then, then, you know, we don't pay it. But in cases where the city did make a mistake, where we see, oh gosh, they took too long to get out there. I mean, then, and we are very sympathetic with, with claimants. Or if they called three one one and, and didn't get the help they needed. Or if it was a recurring problem and, and our colleagues in, in Public Works didn't respond. As, as much as a difficult job as they do, mistakes will be made. And that's why the city has, you know, pays these claims, has a self insurance program. You know, we're not insured, we pay these claims directly out of the city's self insurance budget. So very different parameters. One is based on liability negligence standard and the other is based on, on wholly different parameters that, that I, I don't try to even answer about. It's direct in there.
Got it. So, so to that end, if, if I just sort of simplified in my mind, the, the, the work that DPW doing, is doing by reimbursing folks is more so of an indicator potentially of a problem. But once it gets to, to you guys, we've acknowledged it was a problem, maybe didn't respond to it. And then we assume liability as a result is, is what you're saying.
Yeah, and, and again, I, I don't, I try not to ever answer for Public Works program. But yeah, for, from our perspective, we, and, and I can explain a little bit more. When a sewer backup occurs, what we do is we, the adjuster that's assigned, requests from our colleagues in Public Works, all of the information for that block, maybe up the street, up the line, what happened, we get the three one one records and we can see on there when people called in. We can see their responses, we can see the notes that the people on the field make in the system about, you know, went out there, checked it, checked it again, or, you know, couldn't find anything. So we sent out a CCTV camera up the line, you know, we see all of that. And if we see, oh, that, 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 that the crews did everything that they could. They, they sent the hydro jet, they flushed the line out, or, you know, they pulled every manhole and they diagnosed the problem and then they fixed it. It, that's a, that's where we make our liability decision, decision. And it's a judgment call. You know, we'll, we'll notify the, the, the claimant, you know, say, you know, af- after review of everything we found, the city responded appropriately. So we cannot find liability on the part of the city.
Thank, thank you for clarifying.
Joseph, go ahead.
Okay. What, what I was going to say, Councilman Conway, was on the DPW side, the, the, the root cause, if you will, of a lot of the, the issues that we have regarding the sanitary sewer system is, is related to our, the, you know, aged, old infrastructure that we are currently in the process of addressing through the consent decree program. And the, the, the old infrastructure, whenever it rains, essentially invites all that overland flow inside the pipe and it effectively reduces the capacity. And so what, what happens after a rain is that those, those pipes are way more full than they need to be. Because it's not just sewage flowing in, it's, it's stormwater. And so those conditions are conditions that we already know about, generally speaking, and are addressing through the consent decree program. Which is why when, when they do lead to those basement backups, we're able to deploy a program like the expedited reimbursement or the SOS program to, 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 to correct, if you will, the situation and, and the, and the, and the residences. Other conditions that lead to backups, like I mentioned in, in the presentation, there might be an accumulation of fat swells and grease fog. There might be accumulation of rags, debris, sometimes roots get into the, in the, in the pipe system. Those are conditions that are, they, they do effectively reduce the capacity. But it requires also the, the, a change of behavior, if you will, of, of everybody involved in terms of maintaining these assets.
Thank, thank you for clarifying. That, that helps a lot. The, the other question I had, the other question I had was with regard to the reimbursement program. Do we have a budget for that program? And, I mean, we, we realize we don't have many, many requests at the moment. How far are we from getting to a reasonable amount? And I also noticed we only approved two apps in, given the, the day you put up there. So are we, how are we so low? And how do we make sure that we're meeting folks, folks' need? We all understand this is an urgent issue.
Absolutely. So the, the, the expedited reimbursement program is mandated as part of the, the consent decree. And it is budgeted at $2 million on an annual basis. The SOS program is, as I mentioned, it's, it's a different side of the same coin in that should we have more people take advantage of the SOS program, there will likely be less need for the reimbursement because we are helping them on the front end to not come out pocket. But nevertheless, the, it is still narrowly tailored to those conditions, the wet weather and capacity related conditions.
Just to confirm, so you're saying because we only focus on wet weather events, it limits how many people can apply or those that can't apply, although there may be other issues out there that lead to backups?
That, that is an assumption that I would make, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We're going to move on to Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I just want to say thank you for giving us an information about the SOS program. But in terms of my first question is, the, when I look at the process chart, I have so many questions in terms of when the incident happens to when we do an evaluation to the actual cleanup. Can you provide some clarity around that actual process? And the timeline for each phase of the, of the process?
Certainly. Thank you for the question, Councilman Torrance. The, 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 the process is always starts with the three one one call that the resident makes. So we encourage everyone to, as soon as they, they identify a, a backup, to, to make the call. Once that call is made, our investigators are dispatched. Our maintenance division investigators are dispatched to that location. And what they will do is they will try to make a determination in the field as to the cause of the backup. If there, if there, if, if, if there is a conclusion that the backup was related to or was a wet weather capacity related issue, then at that moment, the SOS administration team will dispatch the contractor who will make contact with the resident and coordinate the logistics, you know, would you like the service now? Would you like to, you know, have it, have the vendor come later? Those conversations happen between the contractor, the third party contractor and the customer. That work, that cost, the contractor then executes the work. There is a certain level of quality assurance that we do to make sure that the work is done according to the level of service that has been agreed to. And, and that essentially closes the, the, the process with that work order being closed and indicated as complete.
Thank you. I have a follow up question because that's where I get confused. Because if we have a person in the field making this judgment call and then that the fact that the funds are being used from an enterprise for mainly a repair to just do this work, then that seems that, that seems negligence then. Then we were negligent somehow without in, from hearing the communication in this hearing. I hear multiple times that we normally don't know really the cause. So we're assuming negligence as the presumption at that time and then we offer the cleanup?
So, so field, field, field decisions are, are sometimes difficult to make. So what we, i- i- if, if an investigator cannot conclusively determine that this was a capacity related wet weather event, what we also have the ability to do is to look at our hydraulic model. And our hydraulic model essentially allows us to input various parameters like the rain intensity or the, you know, inches of rain that have occurred over a particular area. And with that, we can simulate to see, okay, well, with this rain that was, was, that came down yesterday, it is highly likely or probable that this particular house would have had a backup because, based on the, the flow in the main line. So we have those sorts of mechanisms involved in some cases to, to make that determination. And, and as far as the, the, you know, again, it goes, it goes back to the, the question of, of, you know, prior knowledge. We, we know that there are systems or subsystems that are prone to, to becoming, to, to, prone to, to overflowing or prone to getting to capacity very quickly after a rain event. So that, that helps to inform the decision on whether or not the SOS program will be available to that particular resident.
Thank you. I just want to give you, you guys actually a shout out because number, members of my community do hit the message. Sorry. Members of my, in my communities do get the notices before a rain event happens, so they are aware of the programming. Well, the other question I have from looking at your chart, I just want to know, what are the procedural denials? And, and I'm just wondering because that, that sticks out to me. So what procedures aren't the public following to actually get the reimbursement?
If, if, if I could pass that off to Paul as he is most familiar with the procedural issues.
Sure. And I appreciate the ability to assist here. So when the program was initiated, there were a few procedural hurdles that applicants needed to jump over. First of all, it had to occur during the, during the time where the program was active. They were initially required to contact three one one within 24 hours. We have done away with that procedure because people were running afoul of that pretty frequently. We still encourage people to call three one one so we can get out and conduct investigation and determine the, the root cause. But the, really, the procedure that is left that is applicable is submitting an application within 90 days of, of the backup or, or becoming aware of the backup. So, you know, that is the sort of last remaining procedure that would be applicable in these circumstances. But we had traditionally a, a number of denials because people were not contacting three one one within 24 hours. And, and that was the case in 2018, 2019.
So to be clear, sorry, to be clear, residents do not have to contact three one one within 24 hours because it is actually on your website?
That is correct. They no longer have to contact three one one within 24 hours. That, we, we did away with that requirement.
I just want to make sure because it is on your website.
No, that is correct. The website actually, yeah, accurately reflects the, the, wait, the, the information is that they do have to?
In 24 hours, it is on the website. I just wanted to let you know that, like, I wanted to be sure because procedurally, when people see that 24 hours and it's on their website, that then is giving them the wrong information. It's in multiple places, actually. But I just wanted to alert you that it is on the website.
We'll, we'll work with DPW to make sure that the website is updated. I, I, I thought that the website was updated to reflect that we encourage people to call within 24 hours, but it was no longer required.
It is possible, Councilman, that sometimes people pull up an older version of the website. Um, I'm being told that the website has been updated, but we will definitely go back and check for you. Thank you.
Uh, this is Patrick Hancock. I'm looking at the website. And, and Public Works could verify this later, but it says, it, it talks about precipitation within 24 hour period. And then there is a applications must be received within 90 days after.
Okay.
Thank you, um, Councilman Torrance for bringing that to, to everyone's attention. Can we just make sure that all the pages, um, are updated to accurately reflect the information that the public, um, needs to know? When making these decisions, we're gonna move to non-committee members, um, for questions. Um, I see that Councilwoman, um, Ramos did have a question. Councilwoman Ramos, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, everyone. I'm Chief Wallace. I look forward to, uh, being with you and the crew this weekend, um, over on, uh, Hillen and 35th Street. And really appreciate that, you know, we're getting, um, a lot of the attention to that. And, and I wanna thank Madam Chair for your help on that as well. Um, and so my question is around the SOS and also the reimbursement. What happens if there is a, uh, as what happens a lot in Baltimore, we have a lot of rental properties? And, um, you know, typically the city needs, um, permission from the owner to actually go into the home. And what if it's a rental property where someone calls 311 and says, hey, I need this done? Does the renter then have to go back to the tent, to the, um, landlord and get permission? How does that work?
Uh, thank you for the question, Councilwoman Ramos. Uh, I'm assuming you're talking about the, the SOS program. Uh, and, and there is a process, uh, and I, I, I may not have the specifics right, but if it is a renter, uh, there is a, uh, a, a process to, to make sure that, uh, the landlord is aware of what has happened and that they give the, the okay. Uh, but there's not gonna be a, a denial of, uh, of service because the, uh, uh, the occupant is, is a tenant as opposed to a land, uh, an owner.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Um, and then my other question is, um, about reimbursement, I guess in general. Uh, I have a situation where I had a, um, where I had a, I have a constituent who ended up, you know, snaking her own line and doing all these things. And then the fault was really on the city side. Um, how does that actually work? Uh, I guess it's the, the, the law department kinda tries to figure out, you know, who, if it was a city problem and how does that work? Cause she wants to be reimbursed for her expenses for having to do the work herself. And I don't know that it was, uh, attributed to a, uh, weather event. I think it was a, you know, a dry event problem. And sorry for the background noise.
Uh, this is Patrick Hancock in the Claims Office. So, yes, if, if, uh, claimant, uh, spends money, for example, snaking out of line via plumber at the time of the immediate backup, we average four to $500 is typically what people have to pay to get a plumber out there at that time. And then they do pay it and then they can file a claim and that's certainly something we pay for. If we find that the city was, made a mistake, didn't, if the, the blockage was out on the street and the plumber snaked the line, found no issues inside the home or down to the street at all. They can, they can send that snake down 25 feet sometimes and they say it's completely clear. And then the homeowner can definitely file a claim against the city. And our adjusters will look at that, any other, any other expenses. And if we see, oh, yeah, then there was a problem out on the city side and it was not only an immediate, just, you know, response for rags or, or, or debris that the city, you know, maybe we didn't get there quick enough, um, didn't do the right thing, we reimburse the, those claimants. Those are claims paid.
Can I do a follow-up real quick, Madam Chair, about that?
Yes, you may.
Is it, what's the, what's the timeframe for getting reimbursed if the claim is, um, is found that, um, that the, the city is at fault?
Well, so we follow the Maryland statute for claims notice. So local governments have to receive a claim within one year. So claimants have up to a year for any type of liability claim to file against the city. So it, you know, they have plenty of time, um, to do that. And then, again, it really depends on how quickly the city can clear the line or diagnose the problem. And then when we get the, uh, reports, I mean, sometimes we get, uh, 10 pages, sometimes we get 80, um, of reports from Public Works. And we have to go through that history. So that can take time and we're, we're upfront with claimants when they call. We see this is not a quick process. We, you know, a lot of times they want to be paid right away. We explain, this is something we, we have to research. We're gonna have to find out what was the root cause. If we can, we try to get the claim approved within a month or two. But it really depends on how quickly we get the information from the claimant. They follow up and they get us all their bills and the bills look good and, um, appropriate. And then if we, uh, you know, we might have to do some follow-up from Public Works. And then, then we send them a release form. The release has to be signed and notarized and mailed back. That can slow it down. And then we send the, um, check, the check requests over to finance. And the other thing is, I also wanna mention, there are levels of, of authority. So the adjusters cannot pay every claim. They have limits to the amounts they can pay. So sometimes large claims, very, very large backups have to go to a settlement committee and be approved by a number of attorneys. So that can also extend the process. But the quicker they get the claim form into us, the quicker we get started, we communicate with them the process.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, we're gonna cycle back through committee members. Um, again, committee members, we're just gonna stick to two questions. We still have a panel. Um, if you have additional questions, please place, please raise your hand, um, or signal to us. If you do not have any additional questions and your hand is still up in a panelist, um, panel, can you please place it down? Um, I do have a quick question and it is regarding the contractors, um, and the list. Um, how many contractors do we have on the list for the SOS program who will be responsible for the cleanup?
We have three.
Okay. Can you provide that list to the committee? Um, and also are any of those companies minority or women owned businesses?
I believe one might be a minority, uh, uh, owned business, but I, I, I would have to confirm. Uh, but yes, we will provide the list.
Thank you. And can you also add the note, um, if any of those three contractors are minority or women owned businesses? Thank you. Um, are there any committee members who have additional questions, Councilman Torrance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanna correct, DPW did provide that the pages were updated. It is the 24 hours for persist, for precipitation and not actually participation. Just wanna make sure the record was clear, that the website was updated.
Thank you, Councilmember Torrance for clearing that up. Um, Councilmember Conway.
Sure, I have a very brief question. I noticed in the, in the course of, um, Mr. Kabidi's, um, presentation, he, he put up a map that showed hotspots in northeast Baltimore and I believe southwest Baltimore. Is there any reason, um, that we know of or understand at this moment why those tend to be hotspots at the moment? Um, and, um, also I know you, you mentioned also the Headwaters project or, yes, the Headworks project. Uh, will it have any impact on either of those areas?
Uh, Councilman, uh, Conway, to the first question, I, I would have to look at the, the details to see, uh, what, uh, reasons might be. But again, the age of the infrastructure usually is a, is a huge factor. Um, and I can get back to you on that if you like. Uh, as far as the Backriver, uh, Headworks project, the, um, the, the zone of impact, if you will, from that project, uh, is, is, uh, more through, uh, downtown. Uh, there might be indirect benefits, but, uh, generally speaking, the, the 10 mile backup that I mentioned is, is more, uh, west, east or east-west.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for the sponsor of the bill, um, Councilmember Burnett. Did you have any additional questions?
I, I did, Madam Chair. Thank you. Um, so my question, um, is about the determination. I know we touched on this a little bit, but how does DPW determine whether a sewer backup occurred during a wet weather event? Um, and I guess sort of a, a, a back, back on that, um, I guess, could you let us know like what, uh, how much particip- precipitation qualifies for it to be determined, uh, a wet weather event by the DPW?
Uh, yes, thank you for the question, Councilmember Burnett. Uh, the, uh, investigator, when that investigator goes on location, they, they, they will uncover the manhole covers, uh, to, to look inside the manhole and, and see the, if the, that particular manhole is holding water. Um, and so they'll do that, uh, from the, um, area in question. They'll check upstream, check multiple ma- ma- manholes upstream, multiple manholes downstream. And if, if, uh, if the manholes, uh, indicate or are holding water, meaning that there is a surcharge in the manhole, uh, that is an indication, uh, that, uh, especially if it is raining at the time, that there is a, a capacity related issue. In some cases, if, after the rain has attenuated or the flow has attenuated, they can also, um, check on the marks that you can tell where, how high the water may have, uh, reached in a particular manhole. And as they, as they continue to check, uh, the, the connected, uh, manholes there, they can piece together that, uh, they might have, there, there was, uh, a, a capacity issue in that particular stretch. And I believe you had a second question?
Um, the, I mean, you, you pretty much. Yeah, basically, how do you determine, uh, so it doesn't sound like there's a, a particular precipitation amount. It's based on your investigation, that's what it sounds like.
The precipitation amount is, uh, I, it's a, I believe it's a quarter inch, um, a, a quarter inch of precipitation recorded over the 24 hour period. Uh, that is what qualifies as a wet weather event.
Okay.
Um, clarify, that doesn't mean that it was capacity related just because it was a wet weather event.
Yes.
The process that Mr. Kabetti was describing is whether it was capacity related or not, a- as opposed to a, a maintenance issue which had a check. And, and there are other mechanisms like the hydraulic model which can inform, uh, that decision-making as well.
Okay. Um, my, my second question, um, Madam Chair, um, is still, still on this of the wet weather, wet weather issue. So if it, it, based on the materials that we've reviewed, it sounds like that the, as it relates to the, the reimbursement program in particular, so that obviously there'll be a, a, a strong consideration for reimbursement if there's a, a wet weather event that's occurred. Um, however, um, but there also appears to be still, there's still this caveat that like, if a blockage is present, they won't pay for the claim. Can you help us understand why you would deny, um, why, why there would be a denial if there's a, a blockage and wet weather event?
I can start it, Paul, if you wanna fill in, uh, you feel free. Uh, so a- again, in general, the, the, the blockages, um, uh, reduce the effective capacity, uh, of, of, uh, that particular line. So had that blockage not been there, a, a rain event, uh, uh, although, um, having swelled up the flow, so to speak, in that, in that pipe may have actually allowed free flow, uh, through that system. So whenever we do see those blockages, if there is evidence of a blockage, if we're able to determine that there is a blockage, uh, that, uh, uh, that would, uh, that blockage could potentially be a cause of a backup even in a dry weather, uh, uh, condition. Uh, so that, that would not qualify for, for a, um, uh, a wet weather slash capacity related, uh, uh, reimbursement.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll give a little bit more background. So ob- obviously, the program was mandated under the Modified Consent Decree. The Modified Consent Decree, it was an enforcement action brought by EPA, Department of Justice, Maryland Department of Environment, uh, and the Attorney General's Office to address sanitary sewer overflows. Uh, those are overflows of, of raw sewage. It has not been treated, it has not been discharged from permitted wastewater treatment plants. It violates the, the Clean Water Act. Uh, it, it's clearly something we need to address. Uh, what they, what, what they required as part of the initial Modified Consent Decree is that we examine our sewer sheds, uh, get a better understanding of, you know, why we're having these issues. Uh, we were required to, uh, develop a hydraulic model, which we use to, you know, determine how our system functions. Uh, as part of that, we know where we have capacity related deficiencies in the system caused by wet weather. Now, we've done a number of projects to remediate the system, so we're going to be reevaluating that now. And, and we will get a better understanding of, of how the system is functioning now that we have spent $2.6 billion, uh, in, in upgrading our, our system. But the basement backup, although not based on a negligence determination, was still informed by the concept of, of negligence. It was limited to capacity related issues because those are the issues that we would have had notice of. We know because we have our hydraulic model where we have deficiencies and we're limiting the expedited reimbursement, you know, to assist the general liability claims process, uh, for simply cleaning and disinfection of the areas where we have capacity related problems because we would have been on notice of that since the development of our hydraulic model. Now, it is not perfect because we did not expand our hydraulic model throughout the city, but, you know, we, we essentially know or should have known of those issues. And that helped inform the scope of, of the program. And it is necessarily narrow in scope because if we're going outside, again, these are underground pipes and, and we're trying to deal with chokes or maintenance issues, those are best inquiries handed by Patrick Hancock's group and CBI.
Got it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, are there any other questions from committee members at this time? And seeing that there are none, we are going to now hear from our stakeholder panel. Committee members, um, if you have any questions for the stakeholder panel, please hold your questions until after we've heard from all the panelists. Um, just to give you some background, there's gonna be four panelists. They're gonna have up to four minutes, um, to speak. And the first panelist is gonna be Alice Volpeta. She's with Blue Water Baltimore and she's being escalated now.
Thank you, Madam Chair and committee members. My name is Alice Volpeta and I'm the Baltimore Harbor Waterkeeper at Blue Water Baltimore. Our organization has been advocating on the issue of sewage backups and overflows for over 10 years. My role as your local waterkeeper is to speak on behalf of our waterways and to amplify the voice of more than a million people in this region who live within the Patapsco and Backriver watersheds. When the city's 2002 consent decree failed to meet its original 2016 deadline, Blue Water Baltimore was the only organization to intervene in the case and was able to advocate for a stronger, more protective Modified Consent Decree. Part of the new consent decree was the Expedited Reimbursement Program, a pilot program which was meant to provide financial relief to homeowners and renters who are unlucky enough to find raw human sewage in their basements after a rain event. I wanna point out that this was a huge victory at the time because the city's general claims process moved so slowly that some residents were waiting over a year for a determination to be made, let alone actually receiving reimbursement. Most residents were failed by the process and they were denied any assistance at all. But I also wanna acknowledge how grateful we are to learn about the city's new SOS program. When we first worked with Councilman Burnett to bring this issue to light to City Council in November 2019, many people had no idea how prevalent, dangerous, costly and traumatic sewage backups are. Even so, there was resistance to this type of program at first. But when Acting Director Garbark announced during the follow-up July 2020 hearing that DPW would be implementing a direct assistance cleanup program for wet weather, we were filled with hope. And when he described the issue of sewage backups as being a public health imperative, residents felt validated. When he expressed support for a direct assistance program that helps residents in any type of weather, not just wet weather, we felt that we had finally been heard. The city's new SOS program covers wet weather events, but that's not the only way a sewage backup happens. In fact, wet weather events only account for a fraction of the 7,073 sewage backups reported to the city's 311 system in just the last year. The remainder are caused by collapsing pipes, tree root intrusion or blockages caused by wads of toilet paper. The remainder are caused by collapsing pipes, tree root intrusion, or blockages caused by wads of toilet paper, grease, shampoo, and anything else that gets poured or flushed down a toilet. It's easy to place the blame for these types of backups on renters and homeowners. And certainly, we all need to do our part to help educate our communities about what shouldn't go down the drain. But when you consider that many of these sewage backups are being caused by mainline blockages, who is to blame? Is it the individual resident who lives in a low-lying house, prone to backups? Or is it the municipality whose responsibility is to conduct preventive maintenance on those pipes to keep them clear of blockages? The Expedited Reimbursement Program was implemented as an acknowledgement that these capacity-related sewage backups are happening to Baltimore residents through no fault of their own, and they will continue to happen. The city's new SOS program is now being launched as an acknowledgement that sewage backups pose a clear threat to individual and public health. But that risk doesn't go away just because a sewage backup is caused by something other than rain. If anything, dry weather sewage backups are actually more dangerous because they aren't diluted by stormwater. Residents need a program that they can rely on, rain or shine. That's what Baltimore deserves. I respectfully ask you to look out your window right now. We're probably going to see sewage backups in Baltimore City today. So what will DPW be doing today to promote this new SOS program to its residents? What kind of comprehensive outreach is happening today to ensure that nobody is forced to make the excruciating decision between shelling out thousands of dollars to a contractor, risk being dropped from their homeowner's insurance, or cleaning up the mess themselves and exposing their family to a whole host of sewage-borne pathogens? Again, we are incredibly grateful for the leadership shown by this new administration and for the new wet weather direct assistance program. But if application rates remain the same as what we've seen for the Expedited Reimbursement Program, if this program isn't widely promoted to residents, and if arbitrary restrictions continue to eliminate people from eligibility, then we can probably expect about ten people to benefit from this program a year, and that's simply not good enough. The city is on the cusp of receiving over six hundred million dollars in federal relief package funding, which is entirely up to the discretion of the mayor to decide how to use it. Investing in sustainable, equitable infrastructure upgrades and expanding the SOS program to all weather types is not only possible, but these measures are needed now more than ever before. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Um, we're going to, and hold on, Alice, because you just hit your timer. We're going to go ahead and move on to Dr. Christopher Heaney. He's with Johns Hopkins University. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thanks so much for the invitation. I'm very happy to be here. Um, I'm Chris Heaney. I'm a resident of Baltimore City and an associate professor of environmental health and engineering at the Johns Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health. The views and opinions I'm going to present today do not represent the Johns Hopkins, those of Johns Hopkins University or the Bloomberg School of Public Health. As an environmental epidemiologist and exposure scientist, I study the health effects of exposure to hazards in places where people live, work, and play. My goal today is to share what is known about the human health effects of exposure to pollutants and pathogens in wastewater because of its relevance to residents in Baltimore who've experienced basement sanitary sewer backups into their homes. Modern wastewater collection, disposal, and treatment infrastructure has helped usher in major improvements in household sanitation and public health. It's a hallmark achievement in public health. It's therefore critical to maintain a public health perspective when we're considering any efforts to prevent and mitigate the impacts of basement sewage backups for residents. It's well known that exposure to sewage is a significant cause of human disease due to pathogenic viruses, bacteria, protozoa, and helminths. Examples include norovirus, hepatitis A, virus adenovirus, salmonella, campylobacter, shigella, pathogenic e. coli, vibrio species, cryptospidium, giardia, ascaris, and other helminths. Raw sewage can also contain antimicrobial resistant bacteria, which the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and the World Health Organization have highlighted as an urgent global public health crisis. Most recently, the measurement of SARS-CoV-2 in untreated sewage has been used as a sentinel surveillance tool to predict surges in the novel coronavirus or COVID-nineteen pandemic. An important knowledge gap to be filled, as has been identified today, would be to determine whether the frequency of basement sewage backups is related to COVID-nineteen case counts across Baltimore City. After a basement sewage backup occurs, moisture intrusion can also trigger growth of mold, fungi, and bacteria that can exacerbate human respiratory diseases like asthma and chronic obstructive pulmonary disease. Globally, there remain intransigent disparities where in specific places, these sanitation hygiene improvements are not available for everyone. So this led to, through the vision and um uh through the vision and leadership of Linda Batts, who's the former Chief Office of Equity and Environmental Justice at the Department of Public Works, conversations to begin a strategic consultation through the Johns Hopkins Urban Health Institute's uh Strategic Consultation Project Awards, which we teamed up with DPW staff through Linda's help to focus on evidence-based solutions for environmental equity in Baltimore, infrastructure, climate, and home flooding. This convened a group of faculty at Johns Hopkins and students who work with Baltimore City Department of Public Health officials to perform an analysis of the observed risk factors for basement floods associated with basement sewage backups and other water and cellar events, and to evaluate the extent to which there exist disproportionate impacts of basement sewage backups in these water and cellar events across different neighborhoods of Baltimore, and to identify drivers of these spatial patterns. This analysis involved three-one-one call center data, uh, excuse me, three three-one-one call center data between January one, twenty seventeen, and December thirty-one of twenty nineteen, and census tract data from the Census Bureau, uh, which provided some preliminary answers to this question. We observed that there was evidence of a disproportionate impact in the frequency of basement sewage backups. As the percent of Black and African-American residents increased across census tracts, we observed that the frequency of basement sewage backups increased after adjusting for other socio-demographic factors that might be related to sewage backup reports. We also observed evidence of a rainfall-related increase in the frequency of basement sewage backups. Um, and we observed spatial clusters of basement sewage backups. Uh, we also observed that rain versus non-related events demonstrated different spatial patterns, had different baseline rates, and clustering. So all of this is to say that um there is a lot to be learned. Uh, there's a lot that we can do together. And I think this strategic consultation is an example of how uh through a vision of Linda's to try to have some academic expertise and um uh inputs into the into the issues, uh, we can move forward together in ways that make sense for this basement sewage backup issue from a public health perspective. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Haney. We're now going to hear from Ms. Sharon Spence. Sharon Spence is a Baltimore City resident who has been impacted by sewage backup. Uh, Ms. Spence?
Good morning to everyone. First, I want to say thank you all very much for inviting me to this webinar. I appreciate uh it very, very much to be able to tell my story. Hopefully, I can do it in the timeframe that I have been allotted. I have experienced uh sewer backup after sewer backup after sewer backup at my home. Uh, each time, I've been given a different reason for the cause of the backup. The most recent backs-up backups occurred in February. I had a backup on February the eighth, uh, at which point I called three-one-one to inform them. They sent someone out. They told me there was a choke in the line, and they cleared it. I had another backup on February the twenty-fifth. I called three-one-one again. However, no one showed up at that time. On February the twenty-seventh, I had another backup, at which time I called three-one-one again. I received another uh SR, you know, from them, and no one showed up again. They told me that someone would be out as soon as they they could. Usually, an inspector comes out, and then they tell me whether they find something or no. This time, I saw no inspector. No one came out to clear the choke, the apparent choke, I'll say. And uh then on Sunday, February the twenty-eighth, I called three-one-one again because I still had sewage in my basement. And I asked, you know, what was going on, if someone was going to come out. They told me that someone would be out, but again, I waited for hours and no one came. Generally, we are left to clean up the sewage backup, and I say "we" because I am the renter. I used to own my home, but because of disability and all, I sold it to friends of mine. So we work in partnership to get the work, um, you know, get the cleanup, alleviate it. At this particular time, we were going to go ahead and try to clean it up since we had not heard from the city or DPW anyone to come out. I waited. I waited. I went on and put the videos and all showing what I had down in my basement, which was a foot of sewage. When I initially started out, only had about an inch. And we went from an inch to a foot of raw sewage, tissue, tampons, uh, and some of everything. I don't know if you can imagine if your home, I don't know if any of you have ever experienced a sewage backup in your homes. But if you can imagine for a moment what it would be like if you are there with your family or friends, and you're sitting around comfortable in your home, and all of a sudden your home begins to fill up with raw sewage, and you cannot get any help from anyone to come out to help you. And that was the case I found myself in on the twenty-eighth. It was not until I posted on Facebook that uh I was able to get help from DPW. I was told different things. I was told at first it was fog, you know, grease, et cetera, that was causing uh the backup. But I informed them that when the tech came out on the twenty-eighth, when he finally arrived, he told me the reason he did not come out on the twenty-seventh was because of the fact that they knew there was already a break in the line. So it was like, if you can imagine, I was kind of upset about that. So you didn't respond because you knew already that there was a break in the line. You didn't inform me as a resident of that fact. I do want to say, and I'm rushing because I know I only have a limited amount of time to tell a whole lot, but I want you to know.
Miss Spence, take your time. Take your time and say what you'd like to say.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, and what ended up happening, I had all this sewage in my basement for not one, two, three, four days. Everything that was there was completely lost. We were having the church equipment that was stored there, organ, personal belongings, mics, all of that thing. All of that was completely ruined. And unfortunately, that was not the first time. That was about the seventh or eighth time that we have had a backup there. Three times, we have lost completely everything. On one of those occasions, we did use the process, go through legal, and um ask for reimbursement. At that time, I think there was like twenty-five hundred dollars that was given when there was in excess of thousands of dollars that had been spent to clean up. And I want to say that I appreciate the fact that they came out with the new program on yesterday, the SOS program, but it is not enough. It is not enough to just deal with people who are suffering loss because of a weather or wet-related backup. You have thousands of people that are losing everything as a result of sewage backup. And again, I'm a senior citizen. And it is not easy to come in and replace things that you have spent your whole life trying to acquire and see them go up in just a matter of few minutes. And then to be told that, well, because it's not a wet-related process, you are probably not to be covered. And then on top of everything else that was going on, we very well could have died. I live on the first floor. There are other people that live on the second floor. Because the sewage had risen so high, it also kicked out the furnace. It picked out the pilot on the furnace, but the furnace continued to run. And fortunately enough, we have sensors that are down there in the furnace room. So my alarm system was continuously going off, and I couldn't figure out what it was. Because it goes directly to the fire department, the fire department arrived only to find out that there was a carbon monoxide at a level of forty-seven that had filled the house. Had I been asleep, we could have died. I was concerned because we were not able to arouse the tenants on the second floor at first, thinking that they had succumbed to carbon monox- monoxide poisoning. And I do want to say that the city came out, they did. Let me back up for a minute. Because when they finally responded and DPW did come out, they vacuumed out the water, but the water only. When I look back down there, I still saw all the poop, all the toilet tissue, all the sludge, all the other items that people had discarded in the sewage laying there on the basement floor. And I said to the young man, I said, "You cannot leave this here like this. You simply cannot do this." And he said, "I'm sorry, but you're gonna have to call your insurance company to get that out." There was no mention of any of the programs that DPW offers. There was no mention of the fact that they would come out and clean up. Please forgive the noise in the background. I have my three-year-old great-grandchild here with me. But uh, there was no mention of any of that. It was not until I called DPW the next day after hearing from an insurance agent that the city had cleaned other properties that we knew that the city could come in and clean up the work or have someone to come in to clean up the work. I am here today not just advocating for myself, but I am also advocating for the owners. I'm advocating for the community because I know that there was one other person in twenty-nine-hundred block of the street that I live on that was also affected by the sewage backup. When they did come out and uh search the matter out, they found that there were two breaks in the main. They also found that there were two illegal illegal hookups to the drain system. So a lot of problems that we were having all along was coming from, you know, these issues. And as I said, and I know I've got to cut it off, but DPW, the city of Baltimore, you owe it to the residents of Baltimore to do better. The SOS program has to be expanded. It has to be expanded to cover people that have suffered sewage loss when there is a break in the main, no matter what the cost of that break. It, people cannot live like this. People such as myself who are seniors, and as I say, you know, put yourself in that place if it was your home. If it was your family, if it was your daughter, if it was your grandchild, and they had lost everything, you would not want anyone to come to tell you that all they're gonna do is twenty-five hundred dollars or five thousand dollars, or the absolute worst, tell you they're not going to do anything at all. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Ms. Spence, thank you so much. We are grateful for your testimony um to DPW, to our other agencies who are working with DPW on this issue, whether it's finance, whether it is the law department. This is a story that we don't want to hear within this committee. Ms. Spence has said that she is not just advocating for herself. She is advocating for all of Baltimore City, and we're going to have to do better. We're going to move on to Jennifer Kuntz. She's with Clean Water Action.
I'm trying to start my video. There we go. Um, thank you so much, members of the committee, for holding this hearing and for all of the attention the council's paid to this issue for so long. Um, and my power is flickering, so if I disappear, um, please forgive me. The um as as many of the committee members know, we've been working on the issue of sewer backups for quite a number of years now. And prior to Clean Water Action's involvement, community organizations and associations were already working diligently on this issue, trying to get assistance. And it's really upsetting to be here in twenty-twenty-one and hearing stories like Sharon's and knowing that this has been going on for years. People have been coming out to hearings to talk about their really. and knowing that this has been going on for years, people have been coming out to hearings to talk about their really excruciating experiences for years. And we're still seeing these things happen and people still are not able to get the assistance that they deserve. And I do want to give major kudos to the department and to Mayor Scott's administration for moving forward with the SOS program. This is a huge amount of progress, but it really needs to be expanded to provide the kind of emergency assistance that people need in order to deal with sewer backups caused by things that happen inside of the city infrastructure. The restriction that this will only cover wet weather events is carrying through from the expedited reimbursement program, but that does not need to happen. That is a choice the city and the department is making. If that restriction carries through on this program, it will stop a lot of people like Sharon from getting assistance. In the first year of the reimbursement program, forty-three percent of the applicants were denied assistance because their DPW determined their backup was not caused by wet weather. And that's a really big problem, especially because this direct cleanup program is a public health measure. It's not about liability in the way that the law department's claim system is. It's a measure to protect people's public health and make sure that everyone can get professional assistance and in an equitable way. If if it's on people like Sharon who are experiencing backups caused by blockages in the city-owned infrastructure that they are not legally able to deal with, it is only on the city to clean up those things. I've had people say, I've heard people say that they have a blockage out in the main line in front of their street. They know that it's there. Legally, their plumbers say they cannot do anything about it. Those things are the city's responsibility. And at least to provide the kind of emergency cleanup assistance that can protect public health. Because if it's left to people to pay upfront for cleanup, wait for the city to reimburse them after the, what Patrick Hancock described as a very long and drawn-out process. People who confront a couple thousand dollars for direct for cleanup and wait to see if they'll get reimbursed a year or so later are going to be able to get professional help. People who can't afford that won't and will have to clean it up themselves, and that's just not acceptable. The city needs to expand this program to cover all sewer backups. That's at the city's discretion to do so. The decision not to do so is a decision the city is making. It's something within the city's power to expand this program. And we'd really like for the committee to stay on top of this issue, hold more oversight hearings over the coming year, and ask the department to, as soon as possible, report out publicly on the projected cost of a cleanup assistance program and the average cost that the city expects to incur for this program per backup so that the public and the council can have a firm understanding of this. And then to evaluate the program and the possibilities for moving forward with expanding the direct assistance program and then to do so as soon as possible, ideally sooner than the twelve-month timeline that is given for this program in a pilot phase. It would be good to see that move forward quickly because we know that DPW has been considering this for a long time. At the July public hearing last year, Acting Director Garbark spoke to this liability concern and spoke to the idea that the department wanted and intended.
Can you finish your remark and close out, please?
Absolutely. I just, I just want to note that at the last hearing, Acting Director Garbark said that we're viewing this as a city service, as a public safety and public health service. And there are ways to say that this is a public service that we have to provide without admitting liability. And so we know that these conversations have been happening a long time, and we'd like to see them move forward conclusively very soon. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate each panel member's testimony this morning. We're still in the morning. So right now, do we have any committee members who have any questions for the panel at this time?
Uh, Madam Chair, I'd like to ask a question, ma'am.
Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you. Ms. Charing, can you share, can you share how long you've been dealing with with this sewage backup? Once, you know, once you, once, once DPW came out to assess the situation, can you speak to the the timeframe where in which you 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 further experienced kind of mold or any type of, any type of environmental hazards in in your home, ma'am? Oh, you're on mute, I believe. I'm sorry. There you go, ma'am. Thank you. I believe you're still on mute. Is it just me or can anybody else hear her?
Okay. We can't, we cannot hear Ms. Spence, but she's not on mute.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Spence, we're going to bear with you. We can't, we can't hear you, but we've removed you off of mute.
And if possible, this question can also be directed towards Jennifer as well. I'm pretty sure that you've you've heard a lot of residents that are experiencing the the effects, the environmental and public health effects of the sewage backs backup six to nine to twelve months after the fact. So can you speak to that, Jennifer?
Yeah, I think that that's a really big problem when people aren't able to get professional assistance cleaning up because it is very challenging to not only clean up sewage safely in the acute sense, like protect yourself from the pathogens that are in it, but to clean it up completely and deal with the fact that it's likely soaked into the drywall, soaked into anything that it was in touch with. And if that isn't properly remediated, it can and will lead to mold and mildew growth. And that's a significant health risk for people, a significant contributor to asthma and other health concerns. And so that can, as you pointed out earlier in the hearing, and I'm really glad you brought it up, that can take place long after the sewage backup occurred because it will take time for that to grow. It can be cumulative if there was already something present that this kickstarts. And so I don't have an exact timeline for you on how long that takes, but it can be a long-lasting impact of these things.
Thank you. And from the research that I've got, I've gathered, it it's more on par of like the the twelve to eighteen months after the fact. I mean, you mentioned, you know, the the mold and drywall, the the, oh, we also have Dr. Herney on, which could probably speak to that as well. I'll turn it over, back over to you, Madam Chair, but I just want to, I just want the agencies to realize that even though, you know, you're doing your best at 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 getting, you know, getting the immediate remediation, oftentimes these types of remediations are long-term. And and we, as a city, like Madam Chair McCray had just had just stated, we have to do better with taking care of our citizens and and really addressing not only the short term, but also the long-range impact of this problem. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Are there any other committee members who have questions for the panel? Okay. Seeing that there are. My apologies, everyone. Seeing that there are none, we're going to move to public testimony. The committee staff will now call on members of the public who wish to testify. Members of the public, you will have two minutes each to provide your testimony. For those who are signed in using a computer, please use the raise hand function to indicate that you wish to testify, and we'll start with you. Next, we're going to go through all of the users who have called into the hearing. Attendees who called in cannot, who cannot be identified by name will be unmuted by the. One by one, you will hear two beeps when you are unmuted. And if you wish to testify, please state your name at the beginning of your testimony. If a caller does not want to provide testimony, you simply need to say that you don't want to testify after the two beeps. If any speaker is inaudible, they will be directed to call back. And at this time, our committee staff, Matthew Peters, is going to handle the public testimony.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have Leah Kelly first.
Thank you and good afternoon. My name is Leah Kelly. I'm a senior attorney with the Environmental Integrity Project. We're a nonprofit environmental organization headquartered in Washington, DC, but we've had a program focused on environmental justice in Baltimore for about a decade now. I want to provide some additional information about the kinds of sewage backups programs that are in existence in other parts of the country, particularly in the greater Cincinnati, Ohio area, because that we've seen that as a model program that Baltimore should be looking to in terms of what it does. Cincinnati has a direct cleanup assistance program and it has had one in place since two thousand and four. Under that program, the Sewer Authority provides cleanup and disinfectant assistance through third-party vendors free of charge to residents for all backups, including those caused by blockages in the public portion of the system and caused by wet weather events. The only backups not covered are those caused by blockages on private property or caused by street flooding not coming from the sewer system. Cincinnati has an expedited claims program for sewage backups. Similar to Baltimore's program, the sewer, Baltimore's expedited reimbursement program, the Sewer Authority must make a written decision within sixty days of receiving a claim. Cincinnati's claims program also covers cleanup costs and property lost without a program cap on the reimbursement amount. Some additional highlights of Cincinnati's program are, which is more extensive than Baltimore's even now, operation of a separate hotline just for taking calls about sewer backups, which must be staffed by a real person twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. In most cases, a customer service representative must be onsite to assist a customer who who experiences a backup within four hours. This is not an area that is dramatically different than from Baltimore. In two thousand and nineteen, the median household income in Baltimore was about fifty thousand. In two thousand and nineteen, the city of Cincinnati had a median household income of about forty thousand. And the county at large had, in Hamilton County, Ohio, had a median household income of fifty seven thousand. The sewer system is a little bit larger than the city, but smaller than the county, so you can get a sense of how this measure up. So it's a similar area, and they have been able to afford these services and afford to provide their residents with this kind of protection. We submitted a longer letter in two thousand and nineteen laying this out in greater detail, and we'd be happy to submit that again. It was from an attorney in Ohio. We'd be happy to submit this again to the committee members. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you.
All right. We do not have any other hands raised right now, so I will go to the one caller we have. Just a reminder, if anyone would like to testify, please use the raise hand function. If you can't find that, you can also use the chat to let me know. All right. Caller, you should have just been, or heard two beeps. No response. Madam Chair, oh. All right, we have Christine Condon. It's next.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to briefly ask how soon a resident must report a backup to three one one to be eligible for the SOS program? You all talked about how this requirement was removed, the twenty-four-hour requirement was removed from the expedited reimbursement program, but I was curious about the SOS and whether there's any restriction there.
This is a test, this is a testimony period, but I'm going to make an exception for Ms. Condon's question. Can someone just respond and just answer this for this one? For this one public, um, thank you.
Okay. As soon as possible is what we would request, just because that aids in determining the cause. So there is no a specific finite time.
Thank you, Mr. Kabati. Matthew, is, are there any other individuals who would like to testify at this time?
Uh, no, Madam Chair. I think that is everyone.
Okay, so this concludes public testimony. Is there a motion to recommend the resolution favorably?
Second.
Okay, I believe that was moved by Councilman Dorsey. Is that correct? Okay, and seconded by Councilman Conway. So McCray is a yes. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Porter? Okay, that that was a yes, Councilwoman Porter?
Yes, that's correct. Yes.
Okay. Councilman Torrance?
Yes.
And Councilman Schleifer? Is is that a yes? I can, you look really small on my screen.
It wasn't unmuting for some reason, but yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Councilman. So this motion has passed with a vote of seven yeses. And there were no nays on this one. So the committee will report the resolution at the next city council meeting. I want to thank everyone for joining us today. Thank you to the bill sponsor, Councilman Burnett, for bringing this to the, to the committee, and this hearing is now adjourned.